Hello, everyone. I am delighted to bring to you a guest that will give us deep understanding about education. He is an educator that I haven't had on my show as of yet. As you all know, I've had some county office directors, I've had principals, I've even had former students on the show. But we have a unique perspective today of someone who is a former school board member. That's a perspective we are eager to hear more about, at least I am anyway. So with that, let me go ahead and welcome Mr. A.J. Travel to my show. Welcome, welcome, welcome. And I would love for you to go ahead and share with everyone a little more about yourself, anything you'd like us to know.
Well, thank you so much for having me on the show. Excited to visit, certainly having served in the role of a school board member, I'm happy to share about that. I also spend a lot of my time working directly with students and teachers to help deploy student-led restorative practices, in addition to my work with superintendents and school boards to help deploy a student outcomes-focused approach to school board governance.
Wonderful. And I am one of the people that get excited about the word outcomes because it's like, what's the point if we're not having some outcomes? And it's interesting, this conversation in education about exactly how you get there. So again, I think this is gonna be a delightful, fruitful, and engaging, and hopefully very informative episode. So with that, oh, you know what? I'm not gonna let you get off so easy. Tell us a little bit about you personally.
I like long walks on the beach. Personally, I'm much better talking about work than I am talking about myself personally. Largely because the work I do is kind of my hobby. I'm one of those people who they say if you love what you do, you never work a day in your life. When I am not in schools, I'm in board meetings. When I'm not in board meetings, I'm reading about schools. When I'm not reading about schools, I'm watching board meetings and so on and so forth.
Do you have a dog or a cat or?
No, you know, I travel so much that if I did, they would be sorely blacked out. I'm an empty nester. Hallelujah, it's great way to be, y'all. But I guess I would say, you know, personally, certainly having children in the school systems and trying to be an advocate for them is a large part of what led me, you know, along the journey that I'm on now. Certainly, my work around restorative practices had a huge impact on my style of parenting and really, you know, forcing me to think through, why is there a spirit of retribution that I am so addicted to, even if that's not what's helping these children learn what they need to know in order to be responsible adults in society? My work, trying to advocate, you know, for my kids and other people's kids in schools is largely what led me to serving on the school board. And so, yeah, it's hard to disentangle my personal journey from the professional one at this point.
So did you start having circles at home?
Well, so I think of the very first time this happened. And, you know, a kid had, their ball had rolled into Ms. Fells' yard. That's the neighbor, and she's the kind of the elder matriarch on the block. Like, she been around, she knows your great-great-grandma, you know, by that.
President of the mothers' board in church?
Right, all of that, all of that. And so, you messed with Ms. Fells' flowers, you done messed up. And so that's what happened. So my immediate instinct is, you know, like, yeah, what was the punishment? Let's do this, you know, you're gonna be grounded for fifteen years and blah, blah, blah. Like, what do I gotta do to make sure that I've proven to Ms. Fells that I'm handling stuff in my household? And it was around that time that I was learning more about this restorative work. I said, well, let me, you know, I've been learning about this, let me try this out. And so we had the conversation, and I said, what was the harm that you created from Ms. Fells? And he thinks about it, and he's like, well, like, oh, you know, I messed up her flowers. It's like, okay, yeah, is there anything else? Like, well, you know, maybe she feels like, you know, little kids on the block don't respect her like we're supposed to. Okay, so maybe there's some harm around respect. So, okay, so what harm did you create on our block? Because it wasn't just that you created harm for Ms. Fells. Like, it's also a larger harm for our sensitive community. What harm, and he thinks about it, he thinks about it, like, well, you know, there's probably, you know, if Ms. Fells, who runs the block, you know, can be disrespected like this, maybe the other old heads on the block are worried that they're definitely gonna be next. That their property will be, you know, violated next. Like, he's thinking through this, he's thinking through it. And I'm like, yeah, yeah. Now, what harm did you create for yourself? You know, and this was a lot more of a struggle for him, and so he really processes it. And with a little coaching from me, he finally gets to, you know, the harm to me is reputational. Like, now everybody on the block, just all they gonna think is, I'm that bad kid who messed up, you know, Ms. Fells' flowers. And so, the first part of restorative practices is to get clear of what is the harm that I've created for myself, for others, and for our community. But the next step in restorative practices is to get clear about, what are you gonna do to repair the harm? And so after he stopped through all this, like, what are you gonna do to repair the harm, you know, from Ms. Fells? He's like, well, I'm gonna go apologize, like, that ain't gonna be enough, she ain't gonna be interested in all that. So what else are you gonna do? He thinks to, well, I could help, offer to help replant the flowers, and to, and to promise to stand the flowers. And so that, he comes up with this plan for how he's gonna try to repair the harm from Ms. Fells. He's like, okay, so how are you gonna repair the harm to your reputation? And how are you gonna repair the harm to our sensitive community for all the other old folks on the block? He thinks it through. He comes up with this entirely on its own, he says, "To show that I'm a respectful kid, I can go to each one of them on the block, and I can let them know what I did, and apologize to Ms. Fells about it, and offer to mow their lawn one time for free, just as a sign of respect."
Wow.
Now, he's about that paper, so that he's willing to give up the potential revenue to try to repair the harm, like, this is, this sounds like a small thing to you and me, maybe, but this is a huge thing, you know, in the mind of an eighth grader, this is a huge thing. And so he does, he goes house by house to all the other old folks on the block. This is, hey, you know what, I messed up, you know, and I didn't mean to disrespect Ms. Fells' property like that. You know, but just let you know, you know, that I respect you as one of the older people on our block. You know, just wanna, you know, offer to mow your lawn. And he goes with every single one of the older folks on the block and has this conversation. Now, what's interesting is, none of them took him up on it. His relationship with the older people on the block changed that day. And there are people, it's, hey, how you doing? Do they wave? They knew him, and he knew them, and there was this relationship that grew out of his intentional work to try to repair the harm that he, you know, created for somebody on the block. This is, this is a very different nature of result than you're suspended for five days. Like, in one scenario, he doesn't learn to be accountable for his behavior, he doesn't learn to be responsible for the harm that he's created. And the reputation that he has on the block continues to descend. And I think, as young people have a sense that nobody on this block respects me anyway, I think that begins to influence what behavior I'm willing to engage in, since these people already don't care about me. But going through this restorative process, now he's got this extended sense of relationship with people. I think that inspires what is appropriate behavior for him on this block, given that, okay, I know these people, they know me, I don't wanna disappoint these folks again. And so this is the nature of that restorative work. It's like, how are we training students to be personally accountable, personally responsible for their behavior in a way that really pulls them into a sensitive community, rather than what we normally do, which is really excommunicate them from a sensitive community?
I love it. And I love hearing about this woman who runs the block. We all know.
She runs the block. It's a lot of, it's a lot of Ms. Fells out there, she's definitely run the block. But this is the same, this is the same process that I bring to schools. Is that when little A.J. acts up and he pushes little Pamela, like, is our response to that, let's send little A.J. home for five days and see if, in the course of playing video games for five days, if he magically learns character?
Right.
Or are we going to create a context in which the opportunity for him to take full responsibility for his actions and identify ways to repair the harm, to, not only the harm to little Pamela, but also the harm to himself and the harm to our, to our learning community? Because now, maybe there's some other little kids who's like, well, wait a minute. Like, if little A.J., you know, can hurt her, like, maybe I'm next. And now, instead of focusing on my algebra, I'm spending part of my attention on algebra, and part of my attention is looking over my shoulder, wondering what I'm gonna do, God, and how do I prevent that? Like, that is harm that my actions have created for our, for our learning community. And so inside of this work around restorative practices, like, how can students get acclimated to the fact that when you mess something up, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to clean it up? Ain't nobody gonna come and clean up after you. You will have to be accountable for cleaning up the messes you make, for repairing the harm that you created.
Right. You know, I've heard a lot of people speak on restorative practices, but I think the example, I'm glad I kind of pressed you to give us a little more personal stuff. And like you said, it was intertwined with work and personal, but that example gives, I think, the best understanding of what restorative practices are about that I've heard. And, and what I mean by that is someone who is not an educator and who has not undergone the training for it, understands what it's all about, based on that story that you just shared. So thank you for that. And thank you for telling us about this, this event with your son, and even how you transitioned in your thinking and your approach. And, you know, you find that a lot, I hear a lot of educators say that some of the tools that they use at work find their way into the home, but I think it's the reverse as well, especially for like a school teacher. It's kind of like, the kind of parent you are at home, that's the kind of teacher you are at school. And it's a correlation. If you're kind of, I don't know what the right word is to use, but let's just say more of a laid-back approach with your kids at home, that finds its way into the classroom too, only that model doesn't work so well in the classroom. There has to be a clear sense of authority and respect, and, you know, who's running the show, although, respect is mutual, and you want to create that culture in the classroom. But anyway, all right, thanks. That was a longer introduction, but we actually went beyond. We went beyond the introduction into our actual topic for today. So let's move on to our next question. So tell me about some pain points in your life that now drives your sense of purpose regarding being an advocate for education. So when you think back over your life, and I want you to kind of have a little flashback from grade school, middle school, high school, what are some of those things that you think gave shape, that you yourself experienced? And then, things you may have observed that other people experienced that ignited this fire in you? Because it's kind of like businesses, you start a business because you want to meet a certain need that's out there. I think when we get in touch with our passion, it's because we also have a place of pain around that topic, and it makes us say, something needs to be done. What is that for you?
Well, like, I, you know, I moved around a lot. I went to eleven different schools. And the experience of being the new kid every year can be rough. But certainly, you know, part of what it carries with it is that I sometimes had the experience that the school administration was looking for me to do wrong, not looking for me to do great. I've had the privilege of having educators, you know, teachers who would stand in the gap on my behalf, who would, but hear the frustrations, the anger, the acting out of a frustrated teenager, but would instead push for, push beyond that to get at, to get at what, what was behind all that. They ignored the, the challenges that presented, and said, that's not who you are. We're going to hold you to this higher standard, we're going to expect more out of you. And, but for that intervention, but for that insistence on me living up to my full potential. Like, I don't, I don't have the story that I have today. And it's a, it's a blessing that it's certainly on my heart to try to repay or to try to pay forward, you know, to other students, that more students should have the experience, you know, that I've had of having teachers who really, and sometimes, put their jobs on the line to try to look out for a child who's not their own, but who they, who they chose to work hard to support and protect. It's a sacred, it's a sacred obligation. The, the public schools are, for many children, the last safety net available. That if they fall through it, then they may truly fall. Like, a lot of our young people, if they fall through the safety net of public education, they have enough other nets from family that might connect them, or from other organizations, institutions. But, you know, for kids growing up like me in foster care, just kind of bouncing around all over the place, it sometimes it felt like the only safety net, if there was going to be one, it was going to be, going to be teachers.
Thanks for sharing that.
Not just my board.
Because I was gonna ask you, what contributed to you being at eleven different schools? So it was foster care, just moving from place to place. I was wondering, were you part of a military family, or, because sometimes you hear that too? Do you mind sharing, just one, that you might feel comfortable sharing? What are some of the ways that you acted out in school that could be stemming from all the things you faced, being in the foster care system that made it so hard for educators to, to deal with at, at school?
Well, I'm certainly reminded of my fifth grade year, where I was particularly violent. And I felt like kids were picking on me, and because I was new, I was a new kid, as usual. And then, everybody else already had their groups, but I didn't have a group. And everybody else fit in somewhere, but I didn't fit in anywhere. And so, in response to kids doing what I felt like was picking on me at the time, I responded in really pretty horrible violence. And it was, you know, very hurtful to a lot of kids that year. And, and unfortunately, it culminated with me trying to, you know, bring a weapon to school and being, you know, caught doing so, and facing expulsion. This is, this is a path that, having lived it, I have insights into not only the fact that other children are walking the exact same path I walked, but also insights into what can we do to avoid them going as far down that path as I went? Like, what are the, what are the things that we could do in a school system to catch it at this level before it escalates to this level? Or catch it at this level before it escalates to that level? That if we can intercede with children in that place of frustration, then maybe we can prevent a place of violence. If we can intercede in that place of violence, maybe we can prevent a weapon coming onto our school property. So this is, you know, this is doable. Again, this is, this is not a pipe drain, that we absolutely can create safe learning communities. But it does require that we are intentionally looking for, you know, frustrated little A.J. and helping get him the support he needs so he does not become violent with little A.J.
Wow, I love it. And thanks so much for being so candid and sharing that part of your story. Because I always say, you know, kids walk in with all this baggage or a monkey on their back, and we expect them to just be ready to learn. And kids are walking in with all kinds of stuff. You were walking in with, you know, people, because you were the new kid and didn't have your group, people not accepting you, potentially bullying you and all of this. So you had to develop that tough exterior that you were presenting, that the adults weren't connecting all the dots of where it was stemming from. But I've also seen situations, like for me, young in life, I was sexually violated. And so I walked into the school system with depression and already feelings of low self-worth. All of these things get in the way. A kid is not ready to learn when they're wrestling with all this other stuff. It also contributed to me being shy and quiet, and there, we ought to see kids as little people that have stories just like the adults have.
That's right, that's right.
That's why the approach to education has to be more individualized. It's not a cookie cutter approach. It's individual personalities. And that's why I love, in your opening talk, you talk so much about relationships, and that is vital. I mean, it's vital, period. Like, how do we not get that? Relationships is the starting point, no matter what profession, no matter what thing you're talking about. But that's so key, you cannot, I have a saying that I coined. You have to touch the heart to teach the mind. And, and that's it. Touching the heart is the relationship part. And once they get that trust, and they, they form, you form the relationship, now they're ready to hear you about other stuff. Some people say it differently. You gotta feed them and make sure they're not hungry before you can try to, you know, teach them their ABCs. All of that is true too. But all of that is rooted in relationship nurturing, et cetera.
No doubt.
Okay. So, oh, I did want to ask you one more thing that's still attached to that. Are you still in touch with some of those teachers who turned your life around?
You know, I recently wrote a book about my work with school boards, and in the introduction to it, I tell a story about two of my teachers who really went out on a limb on my behalf. And so, after I wrote that, I felt called to reach out. And so I did my best to try to track them down on social media. I was able to find, find one of them and reached out to her. She indicated that we should talk, and so we got on a call. And I went to introduce myself to say, here's, here's who I am. She's like, oh, I know exactly who you are. Really? What do you mean? She's like, oh, I've watched your entire career, I saw when you did this, and I saw you when you did this, and I saw you did this, and I'm just so proud of all that you've accomplished and how far you've come. And, you know, now I'm sitting here, you know, choking up, you know, trying to deal with, you know, suddenly very high pollen count. You're just completely moved, you know, by the extent that she just has had this extended sense of investment in me. And she shared with me stories about things that happened at that school where her and other teachers conspired to protect me from an administration that very much did not want me in the school, and the things that, where she very much, you know, put herself and her career in harm's way to stand up, to stand up for me. And so, it's been such a blessing to be able to reconnect with educators who really did, who really were transformative influence in my life.
That is so great. I love hearing that story. And you know, I, I am in touch with teachers who made a significant difference in my life. I had about six. Two of them passed away, but I'm in touch with three of them still. And then, it's nice because I have former students who did exactly what you said. They internet stalked me and followed me on Instagram and messaged me. And they were like, I hope you remember me, and I hope you, when I'm, I got in touch with this one young lady. And I was like, of course I want to talk to you. What kind of question is that? And so we're back in touch. We're actually scheduled to have lunch at the end of this month. So it's beautiful both ways. But it also is representative of the way I like to live my life. I believe that you reach forward to people who are maybe on a level that you're trying to get to, but you also reach down and you pull other people up. And I think my life with teachers and other situations kind of represent that. So our next question is, at what age did you learn the importance of education?
I don't know. I know that I've always had a passion for, for reading and for learning, but I have never thought of that before. I don't know that I can put a finger on it, but I just know that I definitely have always loved reading and loved learning.
Okay, fair enough. I don't mind saying that for me, it was really late. I was like in the eleventh grade. But I got there. So, when did you learn that communities need to be better educated on how to be an advocate for the school, for school-aged children? What was the catalyst for this epiphany?
This was certainly much later in life, as I was trying to advocate for young people in my orbit. Before I had kids in my own home, I did spend a lot of time as kind of the neighborhood big brother. And so, working with a young group, our friend is my gentleman, and, you know, just kind of this ragtag collection of wayward, you know, middle school, high school-aged, you know, boys in the neighborhood. And really, the more that I got involved in their lives, and getting to know their families and their schooling situations, it just, it became obvious that, that in a lot of ways, they weren't being looked after in the ways that was necessary for them to be successful. And so it's really to be, trying to be a big brother in the neighborhood that I got a sense of how important it is for us to come together as a community. It really does take a village.
Wow. So you understood through your interaction with young people that there needs to be more advocates, and maybe you need to do some of what was done for you?
That's right.
That's wonderful. Okay. So, the premise of my show is for people to come on and share social capital, human capital, which we've already begun to do, life lessons learned, expertise and knowledge on various topics to benefit listeners who may not have access to this kind of information. Again, what we've been talking about. So, we all understand that education has the power to change the trajectory of people's lives. Share what you know and give your best advice to each of the following groups. So, again, you may have touched on some of these things, but go a little deeper here. So, students, what's your best advice to students right now? What challenges and celebrations did you experience as a student?
Well, I don't, actually don't think that my experiences are horribly relevant just because things are so different for students today. And so the thing that I would push on students today, that wasn't as available to me, is you don't need anyone else in order to learn almost anything. Like, there is enough information on the internet, there's enough with ChatGPT that you essentially talk to it, just like you could talk to a tutor or a teacher. Like, you don't actually need anyone else. There is a passion that you have that my guidance is, follow it with reckless abandon. Do not wait for someone to come along, do not wait for the right people. If the, if those relationships are in your life, great. But, but you don't have to wait for anything. But if you want it badly enough, all of the resources, all of the things that you need to really learn and grow in the areas of your passion are at your fingertips, don't be patient, be hungry.
Oh, that's great. I love it. And you, certainly, everything you said is true. But you did share from such a different angle than I kind of anticipated. But I love that. That is great information and great advice. So now, let's move on to parents. What would you say to parents?
Be bold. Is that school systems exist to serve children and to cause growth in what those children and owners are able to do. But children don't show up on their own, they show up under the care of parents. And so, parents should be absolutely bold and advocating for what they see is the best interest of their children. What they see is the things that are most necessary for their children to learn and grow in what they know and are able to do. And trust your own instincts, trust your inherent wisdom about what your students need. You should go in with a a heartfelt partnership with your educators, uh but but don't go in assuming that, well. The school knows everything about my kid. You're the expert on your kid. That that is the piece of the puzzle that. You bring that the school does not. They're the the teachers are the expert on instruction and on content, but you're the expert on your individual child. So go in with a spirit of boldness and and being uh a full partner in that relationship.
I love it. Again, that's great relate uh great advice. You know, um, parents uh don't always understand even the power that they have. Not to be disruptive in the school system in a way. Um, I don't know, I'm hesitating, cuz in a way I think parents need to be disruptive. On a certain level, in a certain kind of way, they need to be disruptive. And I think you may be saying it by be bold. Um, know the power you have, but don't be obnoxious in the sense of. My kid can do no wrong kinda. Attitude-ish and um, there's some stu- there's some parents who are bold. In a way that's not helpful to the school system or their child.
Uh I want folks to show up in the, as I said, in the spirit of partnership. But but what I what I worry is that sometimes I see parents show up. It's like, I don't have an equal standing at this at this table. I'm not actually equal partner. I'm 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 just here kind of hat in hand uh passively, you know, being a recipient of services. And I'm saying, no, no, you're you're a full partner and you know, you stand bold and you're understanding of your child. But no, that whole, my baby ain't 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 wrong. Leave leave that mess at home. Like, your baby probably acted up.
Yeah. Um, but I I do wholeheartedly agree with you. Um, I think parents need to be educated more and more and more about how to be. Uh that full partner and full stakeholder and to advocate. To get things done and to even correct some things that wouldn't be corrected if they weren't present.
Certainly.
So, okay, great. Uh and what's your best advice to district and school site administrators?
Uh make the main thing the main thing. This is the, this is the number one challenge that I run into with school boards and superintendents. Is that it is so easy, the further you get away from um day-to-day active interaction with a child, the easier it is. For the main thing, children growing in what they know and are able to do. To to become distracted and to no longer be the center of the work. And and so there there are strategies, like it's it's nice to say make the main thing the main thing, but there there are certain strategies that. Uh actually help accomplish that. Um, first and foremost among those is to be clear that. The main thing is in fact improving student outcomes. Then the main thing isn't attending to all of the adult drama. The main thing isn't. Making sure all the money is spent right. The main thing isn't making sure all the adults are happy. Like, I'm not actually mad about any of these things. These are all necessary as well. But they're not the main thing. That's the distinction. Is it improving students' outcomes is the main thing. All the adult issues and adult inputs have to be attended to. These are necessary functions of the school system. They're just not why the school system exists. That's the challenge that I see uh at the administrative level, at the superintendent level, at the board level. Is that the further away you get from daily hands-on interaction with children, the easier it is. To think that other things other than which students learn, know and are able to do is in fact the main thing. Um, and the and the more closely you could adhere to a an intense focus on improving student outcomes. Um, the more effective you'll be in your role, the more blessing you'll be to the students you serve.
Yeah, I love that too and agree with it one hundred percent. The one of the most frustrating things to me. Is the adult politics. People wanting to put their stamp on a school, their stamp on a district. It's politics. It's about, some of them even have uh other aspirations like to become mayor or. It's it's not even about they're serving in this capacity as a stepping stone to get somewhere else. That frustrates me to no end because they're doing.
Like, if you wanna serve children, serve children. If you wanna be someplace else, go be someplace else. I'm not mad at you. But don't use children as an access to that.
And I've seen in my experience too, even so much funding wasted. I believe schools can stand and have more money, but at the same time. Sometimes I feel like, I don't know, maybe we have enough money because we're we're, our spending habits are a little bit strange. Better choices with the money we have, we would have better outcomes. So. Um, it's a, it's an interesting thing cuz part of me hesitates to say, no, don't uh give us more money. But at the same time, I know we need to do a better job with the money we have. Okay, um, so. How you, and we're pivoting a little bit here now. How do you define equity? Just the word equity itself. How would you?
Um, I define equity as our. Focus on making sure that each student has according to their need. Such that the starting place for children. Is not the greatest predictor of the ending place for children.
Very good. Not gonna add anything to that. That's very uh very thorough. Um, and I like that you said giving each kid what they need and what they need is different, which is why we talked about earlier. How education is, the approach to education has to be individualized.
As people struggle with this, but anybody who's had more than one kid. Knows of, those two kids don't, even if they're identical twins, they they're not gonna have identical needs.
You are so, that's a great example.
So I don't understand why this is such a trip, you know, why people be tripping over this so hard. We we understand it intrinsically, but then we set that knowledge aside, you know, uh anyway.
For whatever reasons, yeah. Um, yeah, exactly. And so when I talk about an individualized approach, I often think of the ed- special education model. Of like, almost like a I E P. I'm not saying we need to write this formal formal paper for each kid. But it needs to be an approach like that where I understand that this person's needs are different. And you know, great teachers, and there's a lot of them all over the country and all over the world, they do that in their head automatically. Size up a student and say, oh, this is where they're weak, this is where they're strong, this is what they need. They have an emotional thing going on. They may have some abuse in them.
Gonna figure it out.
Yeah, they figure it out and they adjust. And that's why actually teaching is one of the most daunting professions you could be in. Because you're the nurse, you're the you're the the um, you're even the cafeteria person. Kids. To store food, for kids who are hungry all the time. All of that stuff. So um, anyway. Individualized approach and again, thanks for sharing your definition of equity. So what is the difference between equity and equal edu- educational opportunities? I know you touched on it a bit already, but expound a little more if you have other examples.
Uh but this is built into our structures of education. Uh perhaps in slightly antiquated ways, I I think we need to do some significant updating. But the but the basic concept is there. There there's a reason that Title One funding exists. And so that, you know, we think that there's some correlation between poverty and the need for additional resources. There's a reason I D E A exists. There's some connection between students having some type of special need. And needing to have more resources and services to help address that. Then so this idea that children um present differently and that we ought to be responsible for that. It already exists in our public education, so that there's nothing new about that. The 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 latest words used to describe it, you know, maybe new, but the phenomenon is decades and decades ancient. And so I I think what there is for us to do at this point in time is to interrogate. Our school system is just to figure out where are are these ideas of how do we attend to the needs of students? Based on the variation uh with which those needs um present. Uh, I I think we need to interrogate how we go about that and are the tools that we've used. So for example, is free and reduced lunch still the most meaningful way of evaluating? Uh student need in poverty. I I actually think it's uh way past um its utility. And that we need to look elsewhere to find more sophisticated tools for that. But the underlying concept remains the same.
Wow, okay. Um, I like that response. Um. You also made me think of when you use the word antiquated, uh my mind went way back, like. When schools first started in America, it was started for middle-class white males. And we still pretty much operate from that premise. We haven't really revamped them a whole lot. We put little programs in place and everything. Um, but if you go back to just the the whole concept. And now that's part of why we're wrestling with things like inclusion and and. You know, is there a place for it? Do we need it? And diversity and and all of this. Uh but because it was started. On the foundation that it was where it was started. We do have to kinda rethink and and add some more things, which leads me into my next question for you, which is. Is there a need for multicultural curriculum?
Uh, what do you mean by that?
Uh, curriculum that presents books and ideas from all the different. Races and backgrounds that are represented in the classroom.
Yes, certainly. Um, the American story is not a. Um, monocultural story. The American story is not a um single race story. It's not a single gender story. Uh and so to the extent that we want children to actually have. Both a realistic understanding of how we got here. As a nation, you know, wh- what the hundreds-year history is that brings to where we are. And if you want children to have a realistic understanding of where we are today. And if you want children to have a realistic understanding of where we're going as a nation, as a planet for hundreds of years to come. Then that starts by providing uh education. That is um truthful and honest about all of the above. Uh and you simply can't do that um in a very narrow viewed perspective. You you have to be willing to have a conversation about um all of the people who have come, all of the people who are here. Uh all the people who are likely to be next. And and that's, and that is a much more inclusive, a much more. Broad-voiced conversation than certainly the way I was taught.
I like the way you said those who are to come next. You know, uh, I almost felt like I telepathically communicated with you cuz right when you said truthful. Truthful was in my mind. And telling the truth, sometimes the truth hurts. And that goes both ways.
Yeah, but but I I'm not, but I'm not afraid of that. Uh I I know some people may fear that. Uh I I I have more confidence. In our children and our educators uh that they can have tough conversations. They can look at tough truths. I mean, things like the Holocaust are horrific, horrific things to. But we wouldn't turn away from it because it's horrific. We wouldn't stop teaching about it because it's horrific. In fact, I'd say the opposite. We teach it because it was horrific. And because inside of being clear about the horrors uh that humans um um perpetuated on humans. We get some insight into what we are truly capable of, what is within our nature, and how do we never walk that path again? Uh and so, no, I I, some people are fearful. Oh, well, if we talk about these things, you know, you know, children will hate America. No, I I don't kind of that.
Because guess what? All the groups in America, in one way or another, and at some point or another, did something horrible and did something great. I'm sorry, I'm having.
Clarify where we've been.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what I maybe the last little segment that you just said cuz I I didn't hear you. I saw your mouth moving.
Oh, we're having technical difficulties again. Just saying that I I have every confidence that if we invest the time and energy to teach children about. Um, our nation, our nation's history, our nation's present, um and to engage them in dreaming about our nation's future. I have every confidence in our children and our teachers that they will be able to derive from that lessons that help us. Make uh America in increasingly a more perfect union. Uh I'm I'm not worried about, I do not have a spirit of fearfulness around um educating children about the truth of. Um, of their story that in any more so than I think you should be fearful about. Tell people the truth of your story. I should be fearful about telling people the truth of mine. I think we grow collectively stronger inside of doing so. And I think treating children and uh communities like we are weak and can't handle tough conversations. I I think underestimates the strength is within our children.
Absolutely, and said so well, so eloquently. I believe, like you, that the truth needs to be told. We can handle it. And I think I was saying this when I um. I've had a little technical difficulty here, but um I believe that all races. Have and all genders at some point in history and time did something horrible. And did something great. And we need to know about it all because it informs. How we make decisions about our future and about how we wanna go and move forward. And like you mentioned before, future generations, all of that, we learn by what we've experienced. As individuals and and collectively. So. Okay, um, I was gonna touch on the fact that I will a little bit. Uh, the Ruby Bridges uh movie in Florida has been banned for a second grade class. And a friend of mine actually wrote that movie. And there's this whole debate about whether or not the second grader should um uh be able to watch it. And my friend Toni Ann Johnson has been advocating, well, they've been watching it for years and being taught. And it's been used to share a certain part of our history uh that's helping uh kids learn. And I think that touches on the very things that we were just talking about. Um, sometimes there's hard truths, but the movie is not even presented in that way. Uh to like make someone dislike white people or. It's just a truth in our history of a situation that actually happened. And it's the educator and the parent's job. To help fill in the gaps and help young people know uh how to digest that information and not come out of it. If you're a black student uh or child hating white people, or if you're a white child feeling shamed or. Or um, and I don't know, I mean, some of it is left to. I don't know, do some of those emotions need to be there as we wrestle and figure it all out? And then, I don't know, maybe that's how we get to a better place. But those are the kinda things we're talking about. Do you have any thoughts about that debate that's going on in Florida?
I think it's a reasonable concern that a parent has. Um, as someone who. Spent a significant portion of my childhood of hating and actively um mistrusting white people. Uh because of the violence I experienced at the hands of. People affiliated with the Klan. Um, I know firsthand that it is very easy to take from a set of experiences. Um, a deep-seated amount of hatred um for the people. And to generalize that to a larger set of people uh for whom that hatred and frustration um isn't warranted. Um, and so is that absolutely a possibility? It sounds like that parent um has a worry that children will come away from seeing that and say, well, people assume that. All white people hate all black people. Yeah, I think that's a reasonable concern cuz. I've certainly been the person who hated all white people, even when it wasn't warranted. Um, but I I think changing the curriculum based on that presumes that. Um, we don't have confidence in our educators to teach historical facts. Um, in a constructive manner. Uh and I, if. Having to choose between trusting educators and not trusting educators, I I generally choose to trust educators.
Wow, I'm glad you shared your your perspective. I I never had a situation. I never had a situation like that, where, I mean, I knew a lot of the history, I was taught a lot about. Uh, black history and slavery and different things like that. I never arrived at the point of hating white people, it's certainly not all white people. Um, and I've always had white friends, black friends, um, so I was able to see. That not all white people would, you know, do things like this. Um, and I guess I had the ability to see that, um, it's some. Just like I knew some of my own race, I wouldn't even want to have anything to do with, cause I saw them acting out in certain ways. Uh, that I want no, wanted no parts of, but, um. That's interesting, uh, to share your perspective too, that you took that on. I do remember being perplexed because my grandmother, my grandfather, rather. He always told us about having to cut friends down off of trees, he was from Mississippi. And, um, I remember being perplexed as a kid, um, because he had a white best friend. And yet, he sometimes he would refer to white people as a stringy haired devil, but I was like. How could you say that, but then you're so close with this person and this person gives us candy and. So I knew that all these things existed, but it never made me hate a whole race or something like that. But I appreciate you sharing that, um, you had experiences like that. So it's, but I also appreciate you sharing that you trust educators to be able to, um. Present it in a way that would be educational and hopefully not divisive. So. What are some of the mind boggling things that happens behind the scenes regarding the work of school boards that would shock most laypeople? You can use even hypothetical situations or.
As I, I think one of the things that most surprises uh, new school board members is that even if they understand. Basics of budgeting and accounting, that how public education finance works is totally different from anything they've experienced before. Even for organizations with the same quantity of revenue expenditures. That you think that it all tracks, and no, it is a much more regulated environment. Um, there are all kinds of stipulations on everything, and. It it's just a real challenge, I see a lot of people with a lot of business background or accounting background join school boards. And assume that means that they'll be able to understand the ins and outs of public school finance immediately and. Quickly find themselves saying like, this makes absolutely no sense, and so it's, it's it's like a lot of things in life, it's it's a learning curve. I think sometimes it's just a much steeper learning curve than people would expect.
Wow, okay, well, I, well, I'm in education, so I just. I mean, I feel like the finances are. Interesting, but I am in education, but maybe a a layperson might not see some of that, but obviously I haven't seen it from your vantage point. Um, when you served on a school board, what single most important thing did you hope the community would do in support of your work? That would ultimately benefit children?
Get personally invested in the lives of our children, uh, there's few things more important. Like, children need caring adults of goodwill who are personally invested in their lives, so this isn't. Show up and volunteer one day and then never be seen again, this is show up day in and day out. Uh, to be there as a mentor, day in and day out, or a tutor, day in and day out. I mean, somebody who's personally invested in life of the child, such that when they hit the inevitable. Uh, roadblocks that life will present them, that there is a caring adult they know, um, outside of their immediate family, they know they can go to. And so getting personally invested in the lives of children is a huge role that the community can play. Um, to help support uh, the work that schools are engaged in, uh, again, this is, this is village work, this is not. Solo work, this is not work that is just given to educators, this is work that's given to all of us.
It's so true, uh, it goes back to what you said earlier too, full partnership, a full partner. Okay, so you wrote a book called Great on Their Behalf. To help school stakeholders better understand how to affect positive change in their communities. Unpack that title for us and give us the Cliff Notes on your five steps that. Uh, in a prior fr- conversation, you uh, gave me kind of like the skeleton or Cliff Note version. Give us a little more.
Yeah, I've had the privilege, I've had the privilege of working with school board members from across the nation, and. My experience is they ran for the same reason I ran, to really be transformative in the lives of children in their community. And to help inspire greatness, the children that they serve. Uh, but wanting that and being able to do that effectively are just two entirely different things, there are specific. Behaviors of school board members that are required. For them to really be great on behalf of the students that they serve, uh, and for that to be transmitted and to benefit his students. And so that's, that's the intention of the book, is to really give board members access to what's on their heart. To really be a blessing to the children they serve, to to be great on their students' behalf. And so the book then tries to offer, what are areas where school board members normally trip up? And what are ways for school board members to really live into their own capacity to be transformative for children? Um, and it requires the same thing it requires in the classroom, it requires just. Continuous improvement and commitment to getting a little bit better tomorrow than I was yesterday, and a little bit better and a little bit better. And so the book offers what it looks like for a school board to be engaged in a continuous improvement process, starting with looking within and getting. A clear, kind of focused mindset, uh, that's focused on student outcomes, and that moves on to clarify. Uh, the priorities of the community, you know, what's the community's vision, what's the community's value? Uh, and moves on to monitoring the progress toward those priorities. And then aligning the resources and then finally communicating uh, the results. Uh, but this continuous improvement process is intended to help board members, again, just live into their aspirations, that. That they um, aren't a neutral impact, but instead they have a really great impact on on behalf of the children they serve.
Listening to the five step sort of process, it reminds me of, uh. I guess like on the district level and school level, using a um, cycle of inquiry. Um, so that you can ensure outcomes and having all. All the parts, it's a circle, and you can go back to any part of the circle at any time to make adjustments and monitor and. Um, that's just the way of success, if you do, if you follow a model like that around. Nearly, you know, any initiative, it works. I was pretty much likening your five step process to something similar, uh, that we use. On district levels and 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 school levels, um, when you follow. The cycle of inquiry where you may start an initiative and then you're monitoring it and you're. Um, you're making adjustments and. And different things like that, and it's a circle, it's a cycle, and you can jump at any point of the cycle at any given point. To, um, kind of measure your outcomes and see how you're doing, and then change it all together if it's not working.
Uh, absolutely, um, and that's, yeah, and there are a lot of people who've, you know, had similar. Approaches certainly before has written about this, you know, with his questions, you know, what do we want students to know? How will we know when they know it, how will we know when they don't, how will we respond in either scenario? And then just on and on and on, again, it's basic continuous improvement work. Uh, it's just as necessary in the boardroom as it is in the classroom.
Right, okay. Wonderful, I want to encourage everyone to go out and get A J's book, Great on Their Behalf. Especially if you really enjoy the ideas and perspectives that he's sharing today. If you wanna connect with him and get him to come out and be a speaker for uh, your school or your parent group or. You just wanna know more about the type of ideas that he's sharing about how communities can get together and be bold and. Make change to benefit students, I encourage you to do that, um. Now, A J, uh, my next question to you is. What do you know that can be a bridge to help someone get to their next level best regarding this topic of education?
Yeah, if someone wants to get to the their next level of participation, uh, I I would invite them to. Begin with just a deep inquiry, um, but in three different things, uh, the first inquiry. Is into self, wh- wh- what what is my intention, what what do I wanting to accomplish, or why why am I showing up? Um, being really clear to interrogate my own aspirations and to figure out, are they. Truly in alignment with the needs of children, that's that's the first thing I get curious about, the next thing I'd be curious about is. Oh, what are the relationships that I have with community? Uh, are, am, am I prepared to be a representative of the community's vision, or am I more interested in? Um, just representing my own vision, now, there's nothing wrong with being representative of my own vision, but if you really wanna be transformative in this work. Um, particularly if you ever wanna serve on a school board. In that role, you aren't there to carry your own voice, you're there to carry the voice of the community, so I, that's the second thing I get curious about is. To what extent am I actually willing uh, to honor the voice of the community, uh, sometimes even above and beyond my own voice? And then the third thing I get curious about is the what is, what are the needs of the children, what are the unique set of needs of the children? At our community right now, and do not assume uh, that you know that. I foolishly assumed that I understood that when I joined our board, and I was absolutely wrong, and my wrongness in this area is harmful to children. Do not be harmful to children by arrogantly assuming that you understand what the needs of children are. If you have not spoken to any children in a while, you definitely don't know what the needs of children are. If you have not spoken to educators and parents in a while, you definitely do not know what the needs of children are. Take a time to, in a spirit of humility, uh, to actually get curious about what are the needs of our children in our community at at this time in our schools. Um, so that as you get more deeply involved in being of service to children, uh, that it's informed by what they need. Not a misplaced understanding of what may have been true for me, you know, fifty years ago when I was in the classroom. It's a, that, that's what I would do, I would get curious, first about my own intentions, second about the needs of our community, and third about the needs of our students.
Love it, very good, so. This is a question that I ask absolutely every guest on my show, so here it is for you. Which one final gem can you leave with our audience today, is the single most important idea? That you've shared, if people don't remember anything else, you want them to hold on to this one thing?
Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, starting with me, then. What I want for children emerges from my willingness to interrogate my own behavior. And then to make changes in my own behavior, it doesn't start with wondering what they over there are doing, it doesn't start with trying to fix them, it doesn't start with. Well, when our kids stop being poor, then we can educate them, it doesn't start with, well, when everything is perfect, then we can educate them. What's possible for our children lives in my willingness to interrogate my own behavior and make changes in it. To cause my behavior to come into alignment with the students' needs, the student outcomes don't change. Until adult behaviors change, starting with my own.
Very good, and finally, please share any information you would like to share. About how my audience might contact you, get your book, et cetera. I will put uh, any information that you provide me in the show notes, but let's go ahead and say it verbally too.
Yeah, I'd love for people to reach out, um, just email me at A J at A J Crable dot com, which is A J. A J C R A B I L L dot com, or visit me at A J Crable dot com, happy to be. Uh, in communication with folks who are on the journey to improve student outcomes and. Wanna talk shop or just get ideas about what's working and not working across the country.
Excellent, well, thanks so much, A J, for being a guest on my show, I think this has been a very rich conversation. I am very confident that people are gonna glean good stuff from it, and it's my hope that they go out there and buy your book and also. Uh, seek to contact you and uh, engage with you further, so again, uh, it's been my pleasure to have you on my show.
Well, Pamela, thank you so much for the invitation, and uh, anytime I can be an ally in some way, don't hesitate to reach out.
Wonderful.